Of August 20. Welcome. Good evening. We'll come to order is the regular meeting of the town council for August 23rd. We will begin by calling roll.
Councilmember Hefty, councilmember Haskell here, Vice Mayor Wernicke here, Mayor House.
Here.
And councilmember Taylor is absent.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next, our first, second item will be oral communications. You may address the council on an item not on tonight's agenda. Does anyone want to address, anyone in the schoolhouse want to address the council on an item not on tonight's agenda?
So my name is Judith Mendelson. I live on Canyon Drive and I would like to address the ongoing discussions in closed session with Rusty Day and his corporation. It's been months. I feel like the way democracy works is we present ideas in public, we discuss, we make decisions. They may or may not go your way. Having ongoing discussions that the town cannot participate in is not the way I would like to see democracy work. And it's not something we would want to encourage others to do. So I think it sets a bad precedent if we continue negotiations in private over such an extended period of time. And I would encourage you to, if the end result is we have to have a lawsuit, then we have to have a lawsuit. You can't have everyone in town filing private negotiations with the town council. So, thank you.
Anyone else in the schoolhouse? And I'll get to Zoom. Jerry, go ahead.
Hello. My name is Jerry Sheffron. I'm on, live on 30 Valencia Court in Portola Valley, which is Alpine Hills. I want to also speak to you about my concerns about the negotiation that is being done in a manner whereby the citizens of Portola Valley do not know what the suit is about. And it is being, and why it is being done secretly. In my experience with another public board, I know there are no required secret negotiations. It's a choice made by the council. And if the choice made by this council under threat is nonetheless still a decision that you are making to do it that way. Given the amount of legal fees you have spent on this, one can assume it is not about a minor issue affecting a few citizens, but rather a major issue that is affecting perhaps everyone in Portola Valley. Everyone assumes this is about the housing element, which you should have approved in January. If you end up making a decision that goes against the decisions that were made by our committees after hundreds of hours of open meetings, you will make people like me wonder why they should even serve on a committee. This approach, approach is generating significant divisions and distrust within the town. You are making it more difficult to trust you as a council. There are those who support Rusty Day and may be happy about a secret negotiation. But I would suggest to you that there are four more who do not support Rusty Day and this secret process and feel really let down by you. I urge you to get this out in the open and to hear from us. If you want our support, you need to earn our trust and this negotiation process is not helping to build that trust. Thank you.
John Silver has his hand up.
Thank you, Mayor House. I was looking for species, excuse me, speaker slip said in standing back. And those have on them, opposed to support. And I was gonna, since it was oral communications, excuse me, I'm still catching my breath. I ran away to get here. Just gonna put, I support free speech. I support dialogue, accurate and civil speech based on actual facts. But, sorry, just said that. I've got to, I didn't hear all of what Jerry Sheffron, who has had extensive experience in government, I don't know if you referred to it. He's probably in elect, in elected office for longer than anyone in this room. But in my 16 years on our town council, I, you know, I understood the need for closed discussions for personnel matters, discussions of strategy in a lawsuit, maybe discussions about whether we should pursue a particular settlement strategy. But I've never, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, because even though you can't act in some of the oral communications, I believe your account, legal counsel will affirm, you can answer informational questions. So if you've got it wrong, correct me. But please, I'm asking that as a favor. I understand that the details of the day suit filed by Mr. Day at all are being held secretly. I don't understand this. Bizarre to me. I'm surprised California law allows it. It does. You've got it wrong. Explain it to me. It seems nuts and wacky to me. And I just don't get it. This, we've got to have government in the open. Mr. Day says he wants that. Why is it being, now this is a question I will ask, when I'll sit down, why is it being kept secret? Who requested it? And what is being kept secret?
Thank you, John. I'm going to hold those questions for now. Are there hands raised on Zoom? Rita has her hand up on Zoom. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. And I just wanted to comment for the lack of the planning commission meetings. The fifth one in a row was canceled last week. At the ASCC meeting last Monday, I was traveling and was able to sign in and, because I didn't see the agenda. And after Laura had given her staff report, I had asked if there was an agenda, because there was no agenda, but it was on the calendar. And she stated at that time that it had been, it was going to be canceled and it just wasn't updated. And that was the fifth planning meeting that had been canceled. When the third one in a row was canceled, I inquired about it and was told that there was no work to be done. But the safety element is, was, was supposed to be given to the residents, presented to the residents or to the council in October. And then the Stanford Wedge proposal, the, from last year that everyone sent in their comments, May 13th, 2022 was supposed to be presented in July. So it's just a concern for the residents that, you know, the fifth one in a row, and I understand what the housing element not being passed, that there was extra work that now needs to be done. But does that mean that everything else gets pushed aside? And there is housing going up and down. And I know when I was building my house, I was very appreciative of the meetings that were scheduled and I was able to move forward on my project. So, you know, I know you can't answer now, but please, please look into this and hopefully the next one won't be canceled. And some of these outstanding issues that had been promised to the residents could move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Sarah Simbeck has her hand up. Sarah, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Here also to make some comments about the lawsuit that's being threatened to our town by Rusty Day, Bob Turcot and Ron Eastman. In my mind, it's very simple. These are bullying tactics and the only way to deal with bullies is to stand up to them and expose them. Frankly, it's kind of amazing to me that in a town with such a smart group of representatives and residents, that we would even consider negotiating much less behind closed doors with one person who is trying to throw a wrench into things for their sort of not in my backyard agenda. If the greater Portola Valley community knew more about this, I'm certain that they would be horrified. I think this is especially pernicious when we consider the economic consequences for all of us, namely the taxpayers in doing so. So I asked the town council, please, one, give transparency into what's going on with the pending litigation. Two, reveal how much the threatened litigation is costing Portola Valley taxpayers during these times of unprecedented budget deficit. And most importantly, three, fight back and stand up to these bullies. Because if you don't, you will be setting a very dangerous precedent that exposes the town to future lawsuits and potential financial ruin. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. David Cardinal has his hand up. David, go ahead. David, it looks like you're off mute.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Oh, great. Thanks. Sorry about that. Dave Cardinal, we've lived on Golden Oak Drive for 35 years. I'd like to echo the really well worded sentiments of those who've spoken about the need for transparency from our town government, E.G. you guys. That same transparency that we were all promised by the new members in particular of our town council when they were running for election. I think our town, after hundreds of residents, thousands of volunteer hours and yeoman work from our staff, followed by almost a year of deliberations by the planning commission and our current town council, not some old, like, oh, what did they do to us, town council? The current town council arrived at a pretty impressive housing element, given our size and given our position. Unfortunately, three town residents who've been cited before, Rusty Day, Ron Eastman and Bob Turcot, think that they know better than all the rest of us, including the three new town council members they backed and said they would support. Those three told us that elections would have consequences, meaning Rusty, Ron and Bob, not the new town council members. But apparently that was just blowing smoke as they've decided to ignore the will of the other 4,697 residents of Portola Valley and file a lawsuit against all of us because the three of them, I don't know, like, we don't know what they think they know better because they want to keep it private. So they've demanded their demands themselves be kept secret, which is weird. I can only imagine they're afraid that once again, the views of the three of them won't prove popular. Like when Rusty was crushed in his race for the fire district. Instead, they have taken us, the taxpayers, hostage by demanding that we buy them off by acquiescing to some of their non-public and non-fetid demands. Because in the short run, they're less, that's a less expensive alternative than fighting them. So I think the first step in all this is to make the threatened lawsuit and its terms public. Not the attorney-client privileges, but everything else. So we and the people can know how to fight it or what we want to do about it. I mean, if their points are really good, maybe they're good and we should do them. Especially since our town council members were just elected on a policy of transparency. I don't understand why this is a big secret society kind of thing. Let's shine a light a day on this and deliver the transparency we were promised and deserved. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Carolyn Vertonghen has her hand up on Zoom. Carolyn, go ahead.
I don't agree with Mr. Cardinal, but that is a democracy. If I may remind town council, in December, and I forget, it was 2021, 1,800 people, residents of Portola Valley signed a petition. And that was done in one month because we don't have access to all people. So please reflect on that. It's not just three people. We want transparency. We love the general plan. We can all work this out. And I agree with everybody in this town. We need transparency and accountability and work together to make progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. I see no other hands on Zoom. Does anyone in the schoolhouse want to speak during oral communications? Going once, going twice. Dan has his hand up.
Dan Cornu, 182 Brookside. And I apologize if I repeat, I got here late. Sorry. Can you hear it now? No? Okay. Anyway, that burned 20 of my seconds, but that's okay. Anyway. Thank you. I just want to reiterate two things about this thing. We voted for you, all of you, to do this. We didn't vote for Mr. Rusty Day or any litigants to be taking care of this for us. And if they weren't able to persuade us at the ballot box, I think it would be the civil thing to do for them to allow you guys to do your job. At the same time, I expect you guys to do your job and tell him to let us have a democracy, not a financial autocracy. Because what he's forcing us to do is spend our fire safety budget on legal fees. So if his objective is truly fire safety, please let us do fire safety. Don't waste our money on lawyers that are going to be using it for their vacation homes. It's really quite simple. Thank you.
Thank you. I see one more hand on Zoom. It's Kristi Corley. Kristi, go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to say something about the Hawthorns and if we could get out more information on each meeting, gather, have discussions in town hall to, as we did before, we had probably 10 tables to discuss the pros and cons of each thing. So then our two voters from town can vote appropriately. So I would like to see the Hawthorns meetings on our town calendar. I would also love to get regular updates in the ASCC meeting from the planning director as we just gave another 15,000 and it looks like possibly a total of 30,000 towards our housing element. So we would like detailed updates of how that money is being spent in our ASCC and planning commission meetings. And number three, I was disappointed to see that our budget was decreased by $100,000 for our main road fire mitigation. And in the aftermath of the Lahaina fire, I continue to be saddened by the lack of by that decision to decrease such an important thing in our town after looking at the fires in the last couple of weeks. And then on the consent agenda, will the public have time to comment on that? Or is this the time? So do I comment now or do I wait?
Why don't you, you can comment on that separately, please.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see no other hands on Zoom. Anyone else in the schoolhouse? Okay, that closes oral communications. We will move on to item two, which is the consent agenda. Only a council member, I said, item three is the consent agenda. Council members can pull items. The public can comment on the consent agenda items at this point. So I will take public comment on item A, items 3A or 3B right now. So, does anyone on Zoom? Okay, I see Rita's hand up. Rita, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to comment on item B, the approval of reclassification of assistant to the town manager to senior management. In light of possible pending approval tonight of a new town manager, perhaps this should be a request for our new town manager to make so that they can choose a person that could work with them. And then wouldn't we then have a couple of people in that department? I know we're so short-staffed, but then we'd have a couple of people in that department with this hire if it goes through. And, you know, and this item was not in the budget. With our lack of past audits, lack of past closed books and a large deficit that's causing funds to be removed from the reserves. You know, with that department, then having extra people, I'm not sure, you know, this is the time to then have such a person in this particular department. And perhaps we should wait until the town manager, the new town manager is on board and assess what they see as, you know, the needs for the department. And, you know, this is, this is a lot of money. This is a lot of money. And I think we need to look at it, you know, if we're nickel and dime digging away at our reserves. Before you know it, we should have new budget updates every week because it's, it's adding up, you know, $15,000 here, $150,000 there. So thank you for looking into this and it'd be great to have some type of status on where those other things. I know this is not the place where the audit and the financial updates are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see Carolyn Vertonghen's hand up on Zoom. Carolyn, go ahead.
Great, thank you. I'm not going to repeat Rita's comments, but they're very valid. And it's a very big concern for many residents. What I would like to ask town council is really to investigate, what is this, is this really a new position? We have an assistant to the manager. We have an assistant manager. And then we, we are hiring a town manager and we still don't understand why nothing is happening. If I can remind town council, we are unique. We're not Redwood City. We're not Menlo Park. We're, we are a unique Portola Valley. We have a general plan. It's, it's, it was well planned. It was, you know, it took years to put it together and there are several elements. There is such an energy among residents to volunteer for free. And we, we have, we have a better understanding of what's going on. We do it for free. We feel there is a, a need for collaborative effort among several committees to reach the goals and to actually achieve the long outstanding issues that we need to resolve so badly. And we have warned you about the deficit for many years and we're willing to step up, but give us a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other hands on Zoom. John Silver.
I'm not as tall as Dan. Can you hear me? Good. I wasn't planning to speak again. But I have to say that, well, first of all, I have a question. We need to answer it now. I'll look it up when I get home, pull out a book off my shelf, not even your computer, a book. Which American leader more than 200 years ago said, anything for defense, but not one penny for tribute? It's worth thinking about. The other thing is, Portola has a special place. Doesn't mean every other place is, as our past president said, an asshole country. Or S, whatever. Anyway, Redwood City has a general plan. Every city, every municipality in our state, every county is because it's required by the state. We're required to have a safety element, housing element. All these things are required by the state. The only reason we have a town is because it's authorized by the state. And people, I don't like everything about the state requires us to do. But the only reason we have a town, the only reason, according to Supreme Court decision in Euclid in the 1920s, firm the right of government to zone land is because of the police power granted to municipalities and counties by state government. The police power, for those that don't know, isn't the power to arrest people without cause. It's the power of government to protect the public health, safety, wealth. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I see one more hand on Zoom. Betsy Morgan Taylor.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor House. I wanted also to recommend that the council pull item B under the consent, on the consent agenda. Given our significant and growing budget deficit, I've sat through a few of your meetings when you're looking high and low for opportunities to cut fundings from anywhere you can find it. It's really not a time that we would, as casually as a consent item, take on an additional FTE. I realize from Cory's, Cory Stalker's presentation that it's being presented as an opportunity that we won't be spending as much as we did on the .75. However, I think that's not the relevant issue in this environment. I think it deserves a thoughtful weigh-in of all five council members. And most importantly, our new town, our new town manager. I want to take this opportunity as well to welcome the new town manager, as I likely won't be speaking again tonight as I'm out of town. But I did think this was important to get this out there. Welcome, Mr. Ekman. I look forward to meeting you.
Thank you, Betsy. Okay, I see no other hands on Zoom and no hands in the schoolhouse. So does anyone in the council wish to pull an item off the consent agenda?
3B, please.
Okay, so why don't we, so let's, let's go to the minutes. 3A, Mary, what do you have?
Just correcting the names on the people who spoke. I wanted to get Robert Trent Jones. And I think that Bob Adams spoke. We'll speak into that.
Sorry. I wanted to get Robert Trent Jones' name in full on the, on the, as somebody who spoke in oral communications. And I thought that Bob Adams spoke and maybe Bill Russell, but I could be corrected on that if somebody's listened to the tape. So that's all I had. Otherwise, great.
Anyone else have any corrections to the minutes? In that case, I could take a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes. Second.
Roll call voters.
Councilmember Hefty?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Aye.
And Mayor House?
Aye. Thank you. Item 3B. Assistant Town Manager Stalker is going to come up and do you want to say something, Cory, or do you just want to take questions?
I'm happy to talk about it.
Why don't you, why don't you give a just a brief summary?
Can you guys hear me okay? Okay.
No, they can't. All right.
Can everybody hear me okay now? So for item 3B, we were talking about reclassifying the assistant to the town manager to a senior management analyst. So just to give some general information, this is a step below the assistant to the town manager in terms of other cities and their org charts. This position will be fulfilling the same exact roles and the same types of work that Ms. DeGarmo did for the last 15 years. So sustainability, IT management, special projects, software implementation. The long-term goal is that a senior management analyst, if it were to be, or obviously fully funded. And we were to also fully fund an assistant too, would cost less long-term considering it is paid less. I did work with the incoming town manager. I did work with the incoming town manager, Mr. Ekman, on this project. So he is aware that we're looking at the senior management analyst. We've had many phone calls to discuss what the needs are. And we feel that this position will fulfill the projects that we have upcoming. Happy to take any questions.
Questions from the council in this one.
I'd like to understand a little bit more about Brandy's role. Why was she at .75? Was she always at .75? What has she, because she's been with us for a long time. Has she always been in that role? Who has she reported to and who will this person report to? What are the differences is what I'm looking for?
Sure. So if I miss anything, please let me know. But Brandy did work full-time for quite a period. And I believe about a year, two, year and a half ago, she had some personal circumstances that changed. And to also comply with the ARPA funding that we had, we did decrease her to a .75 to try to be fiscally responsible. It's the same project. So she was doing sustainability when she first joined the town, and that has expanded just in terms of sustainability. We did throw IT underneath that camp. She's great with software implementation. So here, if you're good at something, we love to nurture that. So we gave her software implementation as well. And she does a lot of general project management. The idea is if we fully fund it, this person will be able to fulfill the same roles. But given Brandy's 15 years here, she just has such an instant knowledge where we figure somebody will need a little bit more time to catch up and be able to get up to date on the projects we're working on. I apologize that I missed something. Um, who did she report to? Who will she report, or this person report to? Apologies. This person, Brandy did report to me, and this person will report to me as well. But everything we do is in collaboration with the town manager. And before myself, she reported to Melvin, who was the assistant town manager. And obviously, before he was here, his position didn't exist, I don't think, for a while. So she reported to Jeremy, the town manager. Got it. Thank you. Of course.
Other questions?
I do have questions about this. I think essentially who is generating the projects that, that she's going to be looking at, that he or she is going to be looking at? Is it just your ideas going to her? Or is it coming from committees? How is it, how she being, he or she being assigned? Why did you choose to put her directly under you? When we have a, when we're trying to support a new town manager, why wouldn't it be more appropriate for him to at least start with her so that he, he feels sufficiently empowered and sufficiently manned up to actually be able to do his job well? I, I find the order of it a little peculiar. And also, and I, you know, I've talked to you about it. I, I understand your point of view completely. And I think moving ahead is a great thing and it's a good idea. I feel like we're getting to, since the beginning, since Brandy, obviously, I've been here since before Brandy was here. And I remember when Brandy came and all of a sudden sustainability was no longer a resident-run thing. It was also suddenly run by Brandy, who had different ideas about how we use our paths, our trails, how we, what rural care was like. I, I really want to, as far as my new role as being on the council, I want to be able to sustain our general plan and the beliefs of our residents moving forward. And I, I'm not looking forward to sort of somebody who's creating projects in town, in town hall. And we don't have the money to do that. And we also don't have the enthusiasm for it. I think we, we come up with an awful lot of ideas of our own that are awfully expensive. And I, I think it would be better if we serve the residents.
Okay, sure. So the reason that we had Brandy, or Brandy, and then this new position as well, reporting to myself, is we want to make sure that we don't have too many staff members reporting directly to the town manager as they're managing sort of day-to-day operations, working with the council. It's a lot of people at the end of the day that you have emailing you, checking in. Sort of in our department, we serve the town manager directly. As the assistant town manager, we work together on every project. We're in constant communication. And this person would be able to be sort of a generalist for our town. We have a lot of specialists, considering we're a small town. But this person being a generalist is able to pick up projects in other departments. And when you're talking about where these projects come from, so they do stem from the council priorities, as well as the conversations you all have with the new town manager, then we are the ones who sort of create the project from what your ideas are and try to move forward with your approval, of course. I feel like I'm missing another question, so I'm really sorry to make you repeat yourself.
No, I, I just don't see where the residents get in. I, I'm not getting the full force of how you represent, how you're serving the residents with that.
From this position?
From the position of putting that person under somebody else so that that person is not accessible in any way to residents, not helpful for residents, and yet is serving projects which you are creating from our quote priorities, which are something we come up with once a year and run with the ball.
So the priorities that you've come up with are sort of the pillars of the town, and it helps staff focus our staff time, sort of what the most important items are for all of you. But to sort of go back to how this person would hopefully contribute to the community and help them feel heard is, obviously, Brandy's position, attended the sustainability committee meetings. I have every intention of this position doing that as well. This is definitely an accessible person. We would not, you know, be hiding them behind a closed door. We want them to be available to the community, just as any of our staff members are. Again, we all serve at the leisure of the town manager. So we want to make sure we're available and he can point us in any direction and we're happy to serve. I don't see this position, position being any different. Brandy did work fully remote, sort of to answer a question from earlier. This person, I have intentions for them to be in office so they can be accessible.
Thank you.
I think those were all my questions. Any other questions? We did take public comment on this item, so I could just change discussion or a motion.
I'm happy to move to approve this agenda item.
I am not, I, I think we should, we should discuss it. I think there's, there are questions. Personally, I'm thrilled with the idea of having this person. I think he should, it should be recruited as somebody who's just coming in under the, into the town hall. I don't think it necessarily should be assigned to anybody yet. As far as, and I don't know how that works exactly, except that I would start by assigning it to our town manager. So that we have a town manager who feels an authority. And that person comes in knowing who the town manager is. Because I think we've experienced over the last six months, what happens when you start dividing the town manager and the assistant town manager. The town manager has to be the town manager to do a good job. And has to be able to be fully, fully armed and ready to go to do a good job. So I feel pretty strongly, not that that makes any difference, but I do feel pretty strongly that the having a new town manager is the main thing we want to do is to make sure he succeeds. And be fully qualified, fully brought up to speed. He should have all the assistance that he possibly can get. And and there should not be barriers with his communicating with anyone. He should feel that he is the boss of the area. And if that means we start out with this person at least being under him and tell it to convert something to him for some reason, that's fine with me. But I don't, I don't understand why we're going forward with what's happened in our town, which is that there's a moat between the residents and the town. There's the little, little pillars of power being established which nobody can get into. And there, nobody's home when you go there to ask a question. I think we have a moment now where we can make all that disappear and we can work together and we can have a functional leadership in our town, in our town hall. That's my, that's my, my take on it. I would want this contract to be amended.
Contract to be amended. What do you mean? Do you, do you mean postpone the decision on this? Or what, what alternative?
The position works under the assistant town manager as a generalist for all town projects. Why shouldn't that person work for the town, for the town manager?
So you're questioning the, the structure?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we've learned our lesson. Six months of learning what happens when you try and divide a leadership role.
All right. Is that your comment?
My comment. That's not a quest.
Okay. Um, so first, I want to recognize the contributions that Brandy made to the town. We all are both unaware and very aware because I think the effect she's had on the town have been very positive. And you know, we understand things need to change and people move on. So first, a thank you to Brandy. A thank you to Cory for working with Brandy most recently on helping the town move forward on various items. Um, I am a process person. So for me, I do agree with Mary that A, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to approve the contract with the town manager. And even if he's been brought up to speed on it, I don't think there's any way he can appreciate the implications of this decision on our town. So I think we're getting a little premature, even though I appreciate, and I'm sure Cory and others are responding to the need to move quickly. I, I appreciate that. But because I believe we need to allow the manager to get oriented and to tell us what he's recommending, I think this is a little bit cart before the horse. And I would envision this coming up in the future and having the benefit of his input would like to hear that. So I, I can't support it at this point mainly because of procedure. A, we haven't discussed the contract with the town manager. And B, I think he's going to need some time to process this. I don't oppose the idea. I just don't feel I fully understand how it fits in a changing time. So I think it's premature.
Sir, do you want to?
Yeah, I appreciate, first of all, I also want to thank you for recognizing Brandy. Brandy obviously was an enormous asset to the community for 15 years and did an incredible amount of work. And I appreciate that a lot of what she, you know, because she's been off-site contractor for the last year and a half, people haven't felt her presence as much. But I know from staff how valuable and how much work product goes through that role. And I guess it's because of that, that we're at a point where the town is incredibly short-staffed. And for me, this is not the time to, you know, limit the amount of people that are having to work on the projects that we have coming through the door. And I appreciate if there's interest in wanting the new town manager to really weigh in on the reporting structure. But at the same time, this work is not going to go away. This work is, it's an incredible amount of work. And we're going to need a, a resource to get it done. And so I'm wondering, you know, if there's concern about pushing it forward now, is there a way that we could talk about approving the role so they can open it up and get the, the recs coming in and the interview process? And if the new town manager at a certain point wants to change the reporting structure, that's, that's his prerogative. You know, having worked in big organizations, I absolutely appreciate you need to have, you know, you can't have all the direct reporting to one person. And this has been the organizational structure, you know, historically. But if he chooses to change it, that's his purview. So I guess, to me, this work is not going away. It's only increasing. This is a time where we need more staff, not less. We have a lot of opening, you know, a lot of unfulfilled, not open, open positions that need to be, you know, filled. So I wouldn't put the brakes on it for that reason.
Yeah, I would agree with both of those. That one, we have an org chart that, that does get amended from time to time. And that the manager's more than welcome to revisit that org chart when he comes in. But I do want to start moving again. And yeah, we've, we are desperately short-staffed. And we really would like, I would like to see this position filled quickly. I would like to see this approved with the understanding that it might be modified or that the org chart could be modified going forward.
So if I may make a quick comment through the mayor, where staff is comfortable working with, again, Mr. Ekman, to decide where this position reports. I'm not tied to where it reports. I just would like the support for the staff and the town staff and the town council and the community to have this staff member, as Brandy's last day is September 8. And it does take about a month, month and a half to get a new person in here. And I want to make sure that that work doesn't stay stagnant. I'm okay with it reporting to whoever. I just tried to keep the same structure. Happy to work with Mr. Ekman to change that. That's totally fine with me.
In that case.
So do I gather from this that you're not able to change it so that you just believe who it reports to?
No, they have to have someone they're reporting to.
What, what I was?
Everybody's supposed to report to the town manager. Can we just have him report to the town manager and then have them allocate?
So I have a note from the potential town manager, Mr. Ekman. All we're asking is to approve the role tonight. I, as town manager, can pull the recruitment or change it at any time. I can change the reporting structure at any time. Time is of the essence. Trust me to change it.
Great. With that, could I get a second to Sarah's motion? Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hefty?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskell?
No.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Aye.
Mayor Als?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to item four A. Regular agenda, the approval of the town manager appointment and appointment agreement. You have a staff report and the copy of the contract. I will be reading sort of a summary of this as required by law. In accordance with Government Code Section 54953C3, I am providing an oral summary of the proposed town manager contract. Proposed agreement includes the following key provisions. Start date, August 30th, 2023. End date, December 31st, 2024. An initial 16-month term, which may be extended as described below. A base salary of $255,818 per year with no automatic compensation increase. An auto allowance of $250 per month. Contribution of 5% of Mr. Ekman's base salary or $12,791 per year to an approved deferred compensation plan. The same IRS Section 125 cafeteria plan benefits provided to other town employees. Contributions from the town to cover the Public Employees Pension Reform Act, or PAPRA, employer and employee shares of contributions for CalPERS retirement benefits. 20 days of vacation leave per year and 12 days of administrative leave. No severance benefits in the event of termination for cause. In the event of termination without cause, six months of base salary severance pay. Town manager may resign with 60 days notice. The proposed agreement includes an initial term that ends on December 31st, 2024, which will automatically be extended for one year unless the town council informs Mr. Ekman of its intent not to review the employment agreement 60 days prior to the end of the term. Notwithstanding the defined term in the agreement, the town manager is an at-will employee who serves at the pleasure of the town council. And the town council may remove the town manager at any time with or without cause. Are there questions from the council?
Just a couple. And I think they're probably obvious to people who review these frequently, which I don't. So in terms of your summary, what is administrative leave? I'm going to check with Cory to see if you want to help with this question. You'll play a more precise definition.
So to answer your question, administrative leave exempt employees, so those who are not hourly that are salaried, do not get overtime. So administrative leave is standard in other organizations as well as ours to sort of cover those extra hours that staff is working. So for example, council meetings late at night, phone calls on the weekends, you know, late night meetings, early morning meetings, those types of events.
Okay, and 12, 12 days a year is in the range of standard. Okay, thank you. And just bear with me for a second. Like I said, I don't really do too much. The 5% deferred comp, if I understand it, it's a bit of a matching concept that he would have to contribute to the fund, and then we would put in 5% of the base salary. Is that how it works? Or, I don't know who's the right person.
Cory, do you want to go ahead? Yes, um, here we do it without a match, just for certain management staff. So it would just be um, based on his base salary and then that's how it's.
Okay, so if he elects to participate, it just means he has to say yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay, got it. Um, in the professional growth, there's six thousand dollars worth of um, support for professional development. It says memberships included but not limited to, and these are in addition to the six thousand dollars. So I'm kinda wondering if there's a limit on what this is, because right now it's drafted, it seems infinite, and I'm sure that's not the intent.
So we do have a budget line item, and I should have looked at it earlier, for memberships, so it's just sort of within that. It specifically just doesn't have to be those two, as one of them is not as common anymore.
Oh, okay. I'd feel a little better if there was some, some box around that, but if, if these are not extremely expensive, then I, I, I think they're, they're fine. All right, that was the main set, let me just check. No, that's it, thank you Cory.
Of course.
Mary, did you have any questions?
Um, I don't, I, I guess I uh, wanna be sure, I don't wanna be reassured, that uh, we're gonna make every effort to make our town manager successful.
Absolutely.
Absolutely be empowered, he will be center and, and be able to actually make sure that he succeeds because uh, I don't want that to happen, that the person who we are paying the big bucks for to be the town manager doesn't get to succeed. And we have some real problems. But we have financial, we have financial problems, we have morale problems. Um, and we have misunderstandings in the community. All of these need to be straightened out and can easily be done, but not if we're getting two different sets of opinions from two different sets of people. In other words, if you have your, your set of stuff and he has your, his set of stuff and we're feeling, and personally, I think it's very important that the residents feel that they have access to whoever they want to talk to. Because, and I realize that there's a, there, that's not the way it's done, sort of quote-unquote done. But it's certainly what I'm used to in any organization. I'm used to going into the front desk, asking to speak to somebody, having them come out and tell me, not say, I have to go get the lawyer in order to be able to come uh, to find, to find out what I'm gonna be doing as a council member. I want actually to be have everybody in town hall being friendly and positive towards the uh, towards everyone who's, who's trying to get their work done, me included, but also residents who are trying to get things done, trying to get their projects done, trying to get their permits done. And I, 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 I think we have budgetary issues, and we have budgetary problems, but we're not going to solve them if we short-change our town manager. So that's my, my strong position and I'm sticking to it. Uh, we have, we want him to succeed.
Absolutely, that's our goal.
We were gonna discuss this after. Any other questions?
Uh, well, I, I just wanted to.
Okay.
Make, to be reassured on that.
Understood, okay. Um, Sarah, do you have any questions?
No, I got, I had a conversation with Cory earlier today, so.
Oh, and I'll remind people, I, Cory, Catherine and I, Assistant Town Manager Stocker, a town attorney, Angberg, and I were the negotiating committee, so I've actually reviewed this contract in pretty much detail, in pretty, quite a bit of detail, so I don't have any questions. Um, I will take public comment on this item. I see one hand raised in Zoom, that's Ron Eastman. Ron, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. Alright, so I, I my comment is um, I'm, I'd like to encourage you not to approve this contract tonight. Yeah, so on Mr. Edman's website, or LinkedIn site, he says that according to uh, you know, according to his profile, he says that from November twenty-sixteenth to February twenty-one, he was the City of Los Altos Administrative Services Director and responsible for all aspects of finance, human resources, and information technology. He oversaw a forty-five million dollar operating budget and a hundred million dollar five-year capital budget. Um, he re- the manager and council built new community center, created new vision statement and workspace innovation team. However, the, the new, new as of twenty twenty-one, uh, uh, current city manager of Los Altos in his twenty-twenty-two State of the Town presentation had, you know, made the following statement about thirty-four minutes into the, the, the meeting. Um, he says, "Our financial health, how we have managed our city, where we has been, has not been good." In fact, if you listen to the entire twenty-minute presentation with, which uh, uh, Mr. England gave, you know, it's, it's all about fixing uh, Los Altos finances. And so I'm very, very concerned about this. And I think, I think more due diligence is due. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Uh, I see Carolyn Vertonghen's hand is up on Zoom. Carolyn, go ahead.
Great, thank you very much. Um, and I apologize again, as you know, I sent you emails and this is uh, confirming what uh, Ron Eastman just said. We are discovering so many articles and of course, you know, we cannot trust the media anymore. But these are articles from the same cities that the town manager worked in. I'm really concerned. The second comment that I want to make, and I think staff does not understand, the handbook, the general plan, is based on volunteerism, not staff. Staff is supposed to help the residents. And they don't seem to understand that. There is no transparency upon what the staff is negotiating. And that has to stop because all the committees are not making any progress because we have this hurdle. So once again, I'm asking town council to inform staff, we have a general plan and we have a handbook. And first come the residents, they elect the town council. And then staff is appointed to help execute or to, to help achieve the goals that we need. We're a very unique town, we're very proud of this town, and we're, there's so much energy in this town, so please help us succeed. We need a town manager, but you first have to do due diligence before you get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Uh, Rita Combs has her hand up. Rita, go ahead.
Did you just unmute me?
Oh, um, yeah, David, uh, David, David Cardinal also has his hand up. David, uh, go ahead and we'll get to Rita next. Sorry, Rita.
Sure, um, I, you know, I had a different person I thought would be great for the job and we spent a lot of time with and I thought would be wonderful. But I'm totally supportive of your decision. I think it's great. And just think the, the nitpicking and hen-picking and like, everybody second-guessing the town council is, I don't know, if I, I was a CEO of a company or two companies and it would drive me nuts. Um, so thank you for doing your job and holding up the side and um, I totally support your decision.
Thank you, David. Rita, you're up now.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment on this really important issue. As uh, you know, council members, people in the community talked about transparency and the general plan, how we need to all work together. Uh, yes, it seems that the only residents that were part of this choosing of a town manager were the five residents that are, you know, okay, four of them are in the dais right now. Um, but uh, the people in the community, which so many people in the community, it's a community of volunteers. Uh, there are people in the, you know, like at the schoolhouse right now, there are people online, there are people that can't be online right now, but are very interested in this particular topic for many years, matter of fact. And uh, and we, we were not included. There was very nice to have the survey uh, to the community, and I'm not sure how many uh, residents wind up answering the survey. Uh, but as far as the, the next part of the process, you know, besides the headhunter, the uh, the residents were not included unless somebody's going to um, you know, let me know and, I know, and I'm hoping that um, you know, the people that were on the negotiating or who, whoever it was that was um, you know, making, making good choices. But uh, once again, this is an important thing for the community, for our town, and um, it would be, would have been great to have the residents um, be part of this because uh, whomever it is that we approve would be working closely with the residents. And it would be, would have been nice to have someone that the residents had some interaction with, perhaps a public meeting with the residents or, or something before this choice is finalized. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I see Dana Breen's hand up. Dana, go ahead.
I hope I'm on topic. Um, I just, I just arrived at the meeting. Welcome, new town manager. I'm really excited to meet you. And I don't know if anybody's said this yet, but I think we have a history of self-governance. And I hope that in your agenda, in the first month is to meet all the chairs of all the committees. You know, we do the work and we, our town is so different because of our self-governance. And I, I want you to understand that and to respect that. So thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Dana. I see no other hands raised on Zoom. Does anyone in the schoolhouse want to make a comment? Um, our candidate, uh, Mr. Edman has, wants to make a statement. Sharif, please.
I figured I'd jump in here, public comment. Good evening, Mayor Alves, Vice Mayor Wernikoff and City Councilmember. I'm very grateful and excited for this opportunity to be here, standing before you as your potential future town manager. I appreciate all the sentiment from the community and from the council. Uh, your vote of confidence tonight will go a long way as a first step to work together in our town. I wanted to thank the mayor publicly for all the work you've done behind the scenes as the representative of council in our negotiations. And if the mayor represents your town as your, as my first impression, he's done a heck of a job, so thank you. I also wanted to thank uh, Cory Stocker publicly for all of her work that she's done, for holding up the fort along with Howard and um, working to negotiate on my behalf. Um, she has been a pleasure to work with and she really does have a great head on her shoulders and her expertise is amazing. Uh, I wanted to thank Howard publicly for all of your work and your leadership um, for the last six months or so and for the past twenty years that you've been here. Um, I really thank you for holding up the fort and our dedicated staff. Uh, we have a lot of issues, we have a lot of things that we're gonna work on together, and I just wanted to thank you, Howard, for everything that you've done. I'm confident that we'll accomplish all our goals together. My immediate goals yesterday, today, and tomorrow is to listen, to listen, and then listen some more. And when I haven't listened enough, I will listen again. That's my number one goal. My ultimate goal is to bring out the best in staff and to bring out the best in us so we can accomplish our goals moving forward. We have some pretty lofty um, issues that I know that we can accomplish. We are special, and at the same time, we're not special. We have many problems that are not unique to just us in Port Vale Valley. And so I hope to bring that uh, moving forward. I look forward to meeting with the community, connecting with the community, and uh, working together as a group. I'm very proud of the fiscal accomplishments that I've had in the past. I think my expertise will work well. Probably thirteen, fourteen years of perfect audits and um, budget awards and things that I think we, we're gonna thrive here as well. And so looking forward to being your next town manager, I just wanted to take this opportunity to say, say thank you publicly.
Thank you. I see no more hands raised on Zoom or in council in the, in the chambers, uh, so we'll bring it back for discussion. Um, I just wanna start by echoing something that Sharif just said, which is thanking Howard for the work you've done over the past several months, um, just keeping, you know, a steady hand here, continuity. I, I know you've been really great in terms of answering public questions and, and everything and working with all of us, so thank you. Uh, we, we hope to continue to work with you in your public works position and um, again, we appreciate everything you've done and look forward to continuing working.
Sure.
And with that, we have an agreement in front of us. Does anyone want to comment or even make a motion?
Well, I, I wanted to co- a comment in the sense that um, I wanted to acknowledge the public comments, um, and uh, and the effort that everybody has made. Believe it or not, it's, it's good work to have people bringing to all of our attentions what the concerns could potentially be. Uh, our duty uh, as a council is to make sure that our new town manager succeeds and has no problems and doesn't get into trouble with audits and budgets, et cetera. Uh, the, uh, so that, and I did do my due diligence, by the way. I, I did do the extra mile and talked to the Los Altos people, et cetera. I learned uh, the very important point that I've been made about twelve times so far tonight, which is if you don't support your town, your town manager, they can't do the job. And that the entire council has to be strongly behind them and believe in them and they, making sure that they do their job as you want it done, not as they want it done, but as, as the council wants it done. Um, so I got a pretty strong lesson on that from the, the city of Los Altos, uh, which I very much appreciated. Um, and uh, I got the accolades that, uh, on the community center and everything that was very exciting for me that you pulled it off in an extremely difficult situation. So I think this is a man who's got a lot of experience in, with difficult situations similar to our difficult situation. And that we have, if we are smart and don't start being penny uh, pound solution, I mean, whatever it is, yes, exactly that one. Uh, and actually re- recognize that we're not financially a whole lot worse off than we were six months ago. We actually just know what we're, what we're doing now. So I think we should at least loosen our fists enough to make sure that our, our town manager.
Yeah.
Or, um, yeah, I, I'm this was a good introduction to our community. Um, they, they do their work, they have their opinions, and it's so important to listen. It is so important to engage. The committees and the commissions are such a resource for us as a community. And I urge you to find a good way of communicating in both directions. And I don't have a prescription for that. Uh, but I think putting the effort in is well worth it for you. If we can support that effort, if you need sounding boards, if you need anything from us to facilitate doing the best job that, that you feel is appropriate, uh, please use us because, or educate us. Um, it, we're learning too, three, out of five of us are very much learning. Um, so my request is to be very open and vocal and engaged. And I, I think that's consistent with what you, we've heard from you is your goal. So that gives me a lot of, a lot of comfort. Um, the finances are important to our town. Uh, we've gotta get it right and we have a good staff that's come a long way. We need to make improvements still. So that's not what you're here to do, but it is here, what you're here to manage and, and achieve. So it is an important uh, point for the town and I urge you to keep that in mind as well. Um, but importantly, let's make sure that we keep our identity as a community up in front of us and enjoy it. Our town picnic is on the 23rd. It's a special day. There's a lot going on. And it's important to get through the hard times with reminding ourselves of why we're all here and what we enjoy. And I would ask you to try and achieve a balance there as a town manager for our community. I want to go to Howard and just say it's been so impressive with how the community has really appreciated. I mean, one thing for us individually to say it, but I've noticed so much outpouring of appreciation. It's been constant over the many years I've known you, but it's been really, I mean, who would do what you did? I mean, you stepped forward and and you you took on something that was really daunting. So really heartfelt thanks to Howard, and those are my comments.
Thank you. Sure.
So I was going to maybe end with Howard, but I'm going to start with Howard. As I shared with you the other day, we all owe you an incredible debt of gratitude. My sentiments are exactly what Judith just said. It was such a daunting task, and you didn't blank, and you stepped up with incredible passion and the commitment and passion for the town that you've shown us for the last 20 years. And it was such a hard job. And we all know that, and we appreciate your leadership and your calm route was only been, in all honesty, a pretty chaotic time. And I really, really appreciate that. And I know, you know, as we've all said, the community really, really appreciates that. So thank you really and truly. Thank you to your family, because I know you probably haven't seen a lot of them in the last six months. I also want to thank the staff and my fellow council members for the work that we've done together throughout this process. I mean, the the recruitment process specifically. I Cory, thank you for your professionalism. And thank you to all the special work that various people did throughout the process. It's a lot of personal time. And I respect and appreciate everything that you guys have contributed to the community throughout that. So, thank you very much. I am really looking forward to working with you, Sharif. I don't want to reiterate some of the things that have already been said, but and when I think about the the key things to focus on, I don't want to, I wish I didn't have to say them in any order because they are so important. But I think learning the community is a number one. Well, I just said I wasn't going to prioritize because they're all. But the community embracing the staff and supporting the staff, it's been such a difficult time. And I'm I'm a forever optimist, and I am optimistic that this is a new chapter and that this will be a positive new start for the staff because it's been a hard time. And then, of course, there's the work of the town that needs to get done, which to me, the obvious two biggest buckets are the housing element and finances. So we are extending, well, we are proposing to extend this offer because of the time we've spent getting to know you and the confidence that we have in you. And I just look forward to the next phase. So, thank you to everyone.
Yeah, I will echo that. Thank you to all of you. We put a lot of work into this. This is my third time going through this this process. I I I am confident of the result and the process we got to get here. So thank you all for participating. Sharif, welcome. I think we're on the verge here, and I look forward to just getting to work. Because as as we all know, there is a lot to get done, and I think we're all eager to sort of start continuing or start moving forward on these things. So with that, there's no other discussion. I can entertain a motion to approve this contract. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hefty?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Aye.
Mayor Alves?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Congratulations. Welcome.
And more to come. Okay, I'm going to move on to item five, which is our liaison committee and agency reports. I didn't see any reports in the in the packet, but are there any reports anyone wanted to pull that maybe came up recently?
So I had a trails meeting this morning, so the timing's always awkward to capture it for this. So I will capture it. I think some of the they're going to be participating in the town picnic, which is why I mentioned it. And they're going to have a booth, so people could stop by. They're doing some good work on the maps and making sure that they're communicating with the bicycle pedestrian, et cetera, committee. And they're going to be reaching out with regard to the MRSD property, the Woods? Hawthorns? Hawthorns, yeah. Okay, Woods Hawthorns. But that will become something that's pretty important for them to weigh in on in in the near term because Karen Botter was outlining the time scale for the MRSD process, and it's early next year. And that doesn't leave a lot of time for communicating any issues, concerns by the town. So I think if you're taking away anything, it's please keep engaged in that process and monitor it and inflection points on when we might want to weigh in with communications about where the town wants things to move. I think we have a subcommittee. Sarah, actually, I don't want to get ahead of you. I think you're you're on that. But the Trails Committee was just articulating concern that the time not slip away, but where they can have impact on the town's views on that. So if you could coordinate with them, they'd appreciate it. They're going to be in touch.
I can report on the conservation committee.
Sure.
Because it happened yesterday, too. They worked hard. They're working hard with the fire department, as you know. And and they have lots of questions about how that should play out. And I think they've got a very good perspective on it. They have a subcommittee that's working hard with the fire department. And I think they've both learned a lot. And I think we're a safer, more ecological community for it. And they have very good outreach. They are clearly really using their tips, and and they also will be at the picnic, and they'll also do plants and telling the difference between the Tricia and and Sharpie needs and things like that will be very interesting for everybody. But they're they're doing really substantive work in our community. We've talked a little bit about how they're going to live without the hundred, without the money that the Frog Pond is going to not get. And there's an aspect of it, there's a subcommittee on that of the conservation committee working with open space because they want to be assured, we believe that we could get about $110,000 donations to help with the Frog Pond and the road remnant maintenance if we could assure that the road remnant does not get developed. So how to do that, I understand, is very difficult, but that's what that subcommittee of those two committees is working on. I hope I did that right. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one committee. I haven't written it up yet. The geologic safety committee met and and discussed their contribution to town evacuation plan. I had a really good discussion specifically about sort of earthquakes and potential damage to roads caused by earthquakes and some 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 measures that they would they are suggesting as part of our evacuation plan. So I thought that was actually a really good conversation. I will write it up in more detail, and I know they took me minutes to. That's the one meeting I had to report.
Thank you for doing that for me.
Yeah, yeah.
I I thought you should see that.
Oh, yeah.
See that the status.
Yeah, yeah, no, it was good. It was good to be there.
Yeah.
Right here. So, yeah. Okay, if there are no other, oh, is there a public comment on the liaison reports? I do not see any hands in Zoom. Okay, Carolyn Bertogan has her hand up. Carolyn, go ahead.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
With the back and forth on muting and nonmuting, I apologize. So I was hoping that council liaison member Hefty could even share her comments or her experience at the PPDS special meeting of August 7th.
Okay, Karen. I'm on it.
Thank you.
Maybe we can talk about something else briefly while I find my notes.
Why? Yeah, why don't we move on to the town manager report?
Could I just, I did have one thing to ask you.
Sure.
Well, I was sad to hear that they hadn't brought up about having the geologists come to the geology. I just think that piece of bandage for that committee would make all the world of difference because it would be ameliorate the conflict between the staff and the and the and the committee. There would be no more issues.
Yeah, no, understood. Yeah, we've talked about this offline.
On my colleague memo, it never gets.
We need to.
So there you go.
Understood. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, we're going to move on to the town manager report. We'll come back to Mary's report. Howard, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. I got several items here.
Can you hear me?
Let's see, the first, the EPC members, Ray and Ray Rothrock and Jerry Sheffrin relocated AMR back to town hall. So thank you very much. Number two, I was invited by the school district to attend an Ormondale School Campus Tour that was for the neighbor, for the neighbors. They had it specifically for the neighbors to invite them to showcase what was going on and and the renovation that's happened. I got to meet some neighbors too, which was really nice. Number three, just wanted to mention schools back in session next Tuesday. So we're going to see a lot more traffic and a lot more use of the town center. We have worked on all the trails and the right of way and continue to prepare just immediately around the schools and looking for any issues to clear up. Volunteer Gary Nielsen will place the radar trailer out on Alpine Road as a reminder message that school starts next week. And finally, I wanted to thank everyone for their kind words. The mayor, Judith, Sarah, and Sharif. As we know, I I will be returning to my role as full-time public works director next week. Being both the interim town manager and public works director over the last five months has provided a different experience that I'm appreciative of. For your support during this time, I wanted to thank Mayor Jeff Alves, Vice Mayor Sarah Wernicke, town council members Judith Haskell, Craig Taylor, Mary Hefty, the staff, Catherine Inberg, the entire Potola Valley community and its volunteers, and again, for your support and thoughts. I I got a lot of written comments and just comments that are really positive. Even though it was a time, even though it was a time of transition, like we pointed out, we got to do a lot of good things. We got a lot of good things done as a team. Over the last five months, we adopted a housing element 1.0, I'm going to call it now, a town budget in in a short amount of time.
Why is it 1.0, not 2.0?
2.0 is it's not. The Sheriff Contract Amendment until December. We selected and hired an interim town attorney and a new town manager, and many other items while still continuing important operations of the town. I've enjoyed working with the council. Again, as planned, I'm transitioning back to the public works director next week and continuing the town's mission. There's a lot of work ahead of us. I'm looking forward to a positive future for us all and the community that we serve. And that is it. And I just want to a big welcome again to new town manager, Sharif.
Thank you, Howard. Thank you for everything. Yeah, go go back to work. I see a hand up, Bob Adams. I might have missed you earlier, but is there any comment on the town managers report? Bob, why don't you go ahead?
Two things. One, thank you, Howard. And I thank you very much for all the work that you've gone through for the five months. You've been put through the wringer, and you still seem to be standing. Secondly, one of the things that happened early in the meeting, there were a number of questions, and Jeff, I think you indicated that you were going to answer some of those questions. So I wanted to bring that up as a reminder. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the reminder. I I meant to check with council on which one. Let's there was a question, actually, there was a question about why the lawsuit was secret. And I, well, I'll let you answer what.
Yeah, if you want to just answer that. I'll do my best to explain. And just also for the record, the public comment is not agendized. So under the Brown Act, I can only really give a brief response. But if you want, you know, more fuller, we could agendize it and have a have a fuller discussion at a future council meeting. So the the basis for the closed session is that there was a letter in writing that threatened litigation. And that letter is a public, is made public by, it was attached to previous agenda. Actually, I think it was attached a couple of times to previous agendas where the closed session was discussed. So that is sort of the basis, you know, of the of the litigation threat. And I'll just also point out that this is a threat in litigation under the California Environmental Quality Act, which does allow for tolling of the statute of limitations. So most kinds of lawsuits, there's a long, you know, year or so, several years before you have to file suit. Under CEQA, there's only 30 days. So the law does allow extension of that period so that the parties can potentially resolve their differences. And that is, you know, the basis for the discussions in the closed session. I also just wanted to point out one, one thing I think one of the residents made, which is that the Brown Act is a floor, not a ceiling. So while the council is allowed to discuss things in closed sessions, it is not required to. So the council could consider, you know, going forward what it needs to discussion closed session versus what it can discuss in public. I hope that's helpful.
And just one clarification, that, I mean, because it is a threatened lawsuit, it is not public. But if once a lawsuit is filed, that would, of course, be public.
Yeah, so once a complaint is filed, that's a public document. And but there could still be closed session discussions about that filed lawsuit.
Can I ask if the letter that's the basis of the allegation is public?
Yes.
And if so, it seems like members of the public may benefit from being reminded where to find that. So is there a way we can make that easily accessible because there's no reason people shouldn't be able to review that if they want to?
Yes. And if you give me a moment, I could actually probably point to the specific agenda item or agenda.
The day.
That, yes. All right, I've got a link for you here. Just one moment. Okay, so if you look at the May 9th special meeting agenda, the that agenda packet attaches the letter that is the threat of litigation.
Thanks. And there's been no formal suit filed yet. Just to clarify, because I think there's some confusion around that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for.
I it may be inappropriate to ask this because it's not on the agenda, which is, how is it that it became so secret? Why? What was the process that made it secret? Or whatever you call it.
I guess I would just refer back to my previous statements about threatened litigation is a basis for having closed session, and closed session meetings is where the council meets with its attorneys. No one else is allowed to attend the closed session. So no members of the public.
Or does it, does it have to be in closed session, or can it be an open session?
So the the council does have the option. The Brown Act's a floor, not a ceiling. So if the full council decided to have meetings in in public, in open session, it may. The basis for having closed session meetings for anticipated litigation is essentially to protect your, you know, litigation position. But that's, you know, wavable. So that's something to, you know, to consider going forward.
Right, right. And that should be a vote of the of the council.
I guess I would, I would probably say this discussion's probably gone far, you know, so we can.
Okay, I'll do my, I found my notes.
Hold on. Is there any other public comment on the town manager's report? Okay, I see no hands up, so I will, we're coming back to Mary to brief her report on the August. Okay, I see no hands up, so I will, we're coming back to Mary to brief her report on the August seventh bike pedestrian and transportation safety.
There were a number of things that came up, and I really appreciate Carolyn's reminder that I had not turned this in. And I have it all written up, but I was waiting for some clarifications, which I never got back to or somebody never got back to me about. So Patty Dews was there, Parks and Rec was there. It was as usual, a very good meeting. The main thing that I see that's lacking is there was no sheriff's report and no sheriff in attendance. And this is the second or third time it's happened, there was no sheriff and no sheriff's report. And it's very simple. They don't care if he's there or if he's on Zoom or if he just sends a piece of paper, but there's no attention being paid to whether we're having accidents with safety, it's about traffic safety. So that I believe is probably why Carolyn was particularly ashamed of me. So that's two months worth of that, and it seems a very important timely thing to bring bring up while we're doing the negotiations with the sheriff's contract. The other thing is the crosswalks, we have a design for the crosswalks. They obviously are very strongly in favor of the crosswalks, others are not so much. And they also is the problem with the new primary traffic flags because they're very ratty, even I can tell that. They were appreciative of the improvement in the trail treads for the getting kids back to school. And there was a discussion of officer support for zots to tots. And I think that's going to be a big deal. This is the town picnic, we have a race that goes right through town. I have pushed hard for the ponies to be able to be included, and they have been included for the last three years, just put that out there. And they also talked at length about zots, a parking situation. Of course, we all know that the people on Golden Oaks think it's a terrible danger for people to be doing U-turns on Golden Oaks, which I would have to agree with. So they're really trying to discourage that, and they want signs. They want signs, signs, signs saying no parking, no U-turn. Don't do it. And because it's at night, people are drinking and it's, there's no line of sight, it's very, very steep. I think it's, I would agree that it's an accident waiting to happen. And the the feeling is that zots is being penalized by the fact that we're not acting on this. Zots is a pretty big source of revenue for us, and that's what they say, and that they're having to put somebody standing there telling people not to park, scaring people back and forth, et cetera. And of course, everybody's very pleased with the parking at Ford Field as a possible way of decreasing congestion. They're also very pleased with the fact that we moved ahead with making it possible for in an emergency to get out of zots from the other side. So I think that's all that I managed to come up with. And one of the things they thought is that if we ever get around to doing our general plan, that we should have an updated parking policy.
Thank you. That brings us to German. There are no objections. Thank you all, good night.